Okay, I'll call us to order. We'll ask the clerk to call and establish the quorum, please.
Mr. Blakemore?
Present.
Mr. Askey?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Stoltz?
Present.
All members are present, thank you for that. We do have the agenda. There's some packets out on the desk. Also, this packet of information is on our Facebook and website. Before we approve the agenda, we are going to need to make one modification to the agenda. We have, under New Business, we'll need to add a second resolution. So right under Resolution R 5023, we'll need to insert Resolution R 051-23, and this is regarding the county holiday schedule. So we'll add that. So is there any other modifications to our agenda? Hearing none, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the agenda with a one additional modification of the resolution. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries to approve the agenda. Okay, the next item we have is our minutes from our last meeting that was held here back on November the 9th, 2023. The board clerk has prepared those minutes. Is there any questions, concerns, or corrections of those minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented by the clerk?
Motion approved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. All right, so we have a few public hearings here tonight. So the first one we have is an ordinance modification on O-0623 to amend Chapter 4 of the Alcohol Beverage Code for the Code of Walker County that was advertised in the Walker County Messenger on December the 6th. So this is one of two public hearings. It's a fairly short ordinance. I'll read this. Ordinance O-0623, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding alcoholic beverages to provide for an effective date, to provide for servability and other purposes, whereas the Board of Commissioners is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas Walker County desires to amend the Alcoholic Beverage Code to provide for licensing of retail packaged sales of distilled spirits in a crossroad community. Therefore, be it ordinance by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County that Chapter 4 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia is amended as follows. Article 4 Retail Packaged Sales of Distilled Spirits, Section 4-201, is amended by adding subsection E as follows. Letter E, notwithstanding the provisions of Section 4-201(c) distilled spirits by the package shall be allowed on a limited basis in a commercial neighborhood or CN zone in accordance with the following. Number 1, a retail establishment is located in a crossroad community as defined and identified in the 2022-2023 Walker County Joint Comprehensive Plan. 2, the granting of a license shall be a conditional use variance on a case-by-case basis. 3, the front door of the retail establishment shall be located within 500-foot radius as measured from the center line of the intersection of the two roads which comprises crossroads of a crossroad community. 4, each retail establishment in a crossroads community must comply with all other provisions of the Walker County Code of Ordinance and applicable laws of the state of Georgia. Number 2, this ordinance is effective immediately upon its adoption. 3, if any section, cause, sentence, or phrase of this ordinance is held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any court or jurisdiction, then said holding shall in no way affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. And this ordinance would be up for a vote by the Board of Commissioners on the 28th day of December 2023. So at this time, is there any board member that would like to make any comments on this before we open up the floor for anyone to come and speak from the public? Okay, hearing none, is there anyone in the public here tonight that would like to come forward and speak on this ordinance amendment? Anyone that would like to speak on this ordinance amendment which is O-0623, which would amend Chapter 4 of the Alcohol Beverage Code to affect commercial neighborhoods to allow for a conditional use variance? Okay, hearing is seen, no one. Any further comment of the board on this, this time? Okay, very good, we will move forward then. Next item we have is the county's request a variance of less than five acres in an A1 agriculture for zone for property located at 2549 South Dick Creek Road, Lafette, Georgia 30728, tax map impartial number 0-545-008. Is there anyone here tonight that wants to speak in opposition of this request? Anyone in opposition? Okay, hearing is seen, no one. Is anyone here, or the applicant, or anyone that wants to speak in favor of this, or if you're the applicant and would like to speak, you don't have to, but you're welcome to come forward. We'll ask you to keep your comments within five minutes, if you would, please. Yes, please state your name for the record.
It's Terrell Cannon. And we were just here for the variance on behalf of a hardship, and that's why we wanted to move the mobile home on the three and a quarter acres. We have eight and a quarter acres, and we wanted to move the mobile home on three and a quarter of that acres for our son to come and live in that mobile home to help. Since I've had, I've had five retina surgeries, which caused me to lose sight in the left eye, and then I just had rotated cup surgery, which is going to keep me out of work for six months. And so that's why we wanted the variance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else that would like to speak on this one? Okay, hearing is seen, no one. We'll move to our next one on our agenda. David Pace requests a rezone for R2 residential to C1 commercial for property located at 71 Center Grove Road, Lafette, Georgia 30728, tax map impartial number 0-329-2-044. Is anyone here who wants to speak in opposition of this? Any opposition? Anyone that wants to speak in favor, if the applicant would like to speak? Again, it's not mandatory that you do, but you are welcome to at this time. Anyone would like to speak? Okay, last call, anyone for or against this that would like to speak? And again, the board will be taking action on these later in our agenda. This is just for the public hearing. The board will take action on these later in our agenda. Okay, hearing done, we'll move to our next one. Yogesh Patel requests a rezone from R2 residential to C1 commercial for property located at 807 Mission Ridge Road, Rossville, Georgia 30741, tax map impartial number 0-124-063. Anyone here in opposition? Mission Ridge Road, 807 Mission Ridge Road, any opposition? Okay, seeing no ones, anyone who wants to speak in favor of this, or the applicant would like to speak? All right, last call, anyone who wants to speak on this one? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Okay, this time on our agenda is our public comment. If anyone would like to speak to the board and address the public on any matters regarding anything going on in the county that we might could have an effect on, we do ask you to come forward and state your name for the record and keep your comments within five minutes. Is anyone that would like to come speak tonight? Yes, sir, at the very back row, please come up. Please state your name.
Vance Roden. I live at 554 Goodson Circle, Rock Springs, Georgia. I really don't know how to address it. I'm not a good delegator or get it, you know, or word it real well. I'm trying to get our speed limit lowered on Goodson Circle. I guess at the time they posted those speed limits, it wasn't as crowded down through Goodson Circle. So you got countless speeders. In the spring and in the summertime, you got joggers. I'm a jogger. I got two puppies, I walk, my wife walks. We did have a guy in a wheelchair. You got bicyclers, cyclists. It's very dangerous, you just have to live there to see. Most of my neighbors are glad that I'm here. When it's time for a meeting, they can't show up, you know, that's between them and their stuff. But if there's anything you guys can do, at the end of Goodson Circle, south of Goodson Circle, Straight Gut, if you look right back towards the prison, you can see, very visible. Okay. But if you look left, going towards Rock Springs, there's a little blind hill. Me and my wife has almost been T-boned twice. The first time, the first time it happened, it almost, it probably killed both of us. It was two guys, two young guys, they was separate vehicles, and they was just flying down there, and they topped that hill, and there we were. We, you know, so by the grace of God, I'm here. But I think the speed limit now is 30 miles an hour. If we can get, if I can get it lowered five miles an hour, it would be a big help. They may not be nothing they can do, but it was said in the driver's head, hey, that's five more miles per hour, you know? When I see a speed limit, say 45, 50 mile an hour, if I go two or three miles an hour past that, I think it's okay. But in actuality, it's not, but I do, and that's what the speeders are doing down through there. But if there's anything you guys can do, I call the, I can call the, and now the county's been real good to police officers, they've been real good, very polite, good people. I've called Sheriff Wilson, well, I called the county, the guys, the deputies out there first, and they said, Mr. Roden, there's nothing we can do. It's the state. So I, I said, well, guys, I'm just worrying you. I don't want to be worrying you guys anymore. So I called Sheriff Wilson, Steve Wilson, and he told me to get your email and Mark's email, Shannon and Mark, you know? And I didn't, I said, well, I'm going to just talk to them in person, from mouth to mouth. Because, you know, if it's a problem, I want you to know about it, you know, you'll talk to them in person. But it's a nuisance, it's not just only me. I got a little eight-year-old boy that lives beside me. I got some children on the other side of me. Like I said, we got, I can't keep pets. I know there's a leash law, but, you know, things happen, you know? But there's nothing else I was going to say. But like I said, man, I appreciate it, if there's anything you can do. Well, Sheriff Wilson told me it was a state problem, I have to call the state patrol officers. So I called Atlanta State Patrol, they were real nice too. So they gave me the truth that's over that, that determines, I don't know exactly what it is, what they're over, but I called them. Troop C hadn't called me back yet to see what they're, if I didn't think it was important, I'd be at home in my recliner right now, you know?
That's right.
I'm on behalf of my whole neighborhood, you know?
Well, what we can do is we can contact GDOT, Georgia Department of Transportation, and they have a test vehicle that they use to determine what speed needs to be set on a road based off of the conditions. So we can request them to come up and do a study on Goodson, and also we'll have them check Straight Gut Road, Straight Gut Road again as well. But they take in all the conditions, the type of surface, the
Yeah.
the villagers, population, all that, they put that into their database, and it determines and tells them what that speed limit needs to be set at.
Okay.
And that gives us data to work from and their recommendations, so we'll get that done.
That's fine, Mr. Whitfield. And also, at the end of Goodson there, when you take a left and look back towards Rock Springs, that little blind hill, well, if you're going west on Straight Gut, if you're going towards the prison, I'm thinking maybe if you could put a sign right there on the right half of the road, it's just on the other side of the hill. You see it in a lot of places. Y'all
And they'll make recommendations too of any additional signs they feel like that need to be up, but we'll work on that.
Okay.
So thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, sir. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else that'd like to speak tonight on any county topic? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move forward on our agenda. Okay, under our new business, this is a resolution to discontinue our burn ban that we put in place. Resolution R 050-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to rescind the burn ban in Walker County, whereas the chairman enacted Executive Order 23-01 on November the 4th, 2023, due to the threat of fire danger by establishing a 45-day burn ban on all outdoor burning, including but not limited to small piles of natural vegetation, yard debris, and campfires in Walker County, whereas the board ratified the executive order 2023-1 by approving a resolution R 049-23 on November the 9th, 2023. Whereas recent participation, if I can say that word, improved the county's drought status from a D4 exceptional on November 21st, 2023, to a D3 extreme on November the 28th, 2023, according to the U.S. Drought Monitor. And whereas additional rainfall, the board finds the conditions that led to the existence of Executive Order 2023-01 and Resolution R 49-23 have been lessened, and that both actions should be rescinded. Now therefore be it resolved that the Walker County Board of Commissioners rescind Executive Order 2023-01 and Resolution R 49-23, so resolved and adopted the 14th day of December 23. So this would actually sunset our burn ban if it stays early, based off the rain that we've had. Any discussion or comment of the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
I just had a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So just to remind folks, if you are burning, it's still, I wish Chief Hodges here, but I think it's still a requirement to notify the forestry when you are
You still have to get a burn permit.
Right.
That's correct. So everyone still needs a burn permit regardless, you know, when you're burning, to make sure it is clear to burn.
Mm-hmm. And in the rural areas, that's done through the Georgia Forestry Commission, I believe.
Last time I called for a burn permit, they said you didn't give them one.
That's why I wish Chief Hodges here, because I think they have changed that, you're right. And
I think they just won't be calling them
Just to let them know.
But
Yeah, that's my understanding of it. Yes, John?
We'll get some clarification. Or do you know John?
Yeah, EPD requires you can use an ACD if you're within a thousand foot of a habitable structure as well. So even, I think some agglions are exempt, but any construction debris or land clearing if you're within a thousand foot of a habitable structure, you have to use the blowers ACD.
Pit, like a pit burn?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay, we'll get Joe to put some information out on our Facebook as well as what those regulations are.
They're good.
Good question. All right, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, we have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's approved to rescind the burn ban. Okay, this was the additional resolution that we added here tonight. This is Resolution R-051-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to amend the holiday calendar for the county offices in 2023. Whereas Walker County is duly created and validly extending political subdivision of the state of Georgia under the Constitution of the Law of the State of Georgia, and whereas Walker County recognizes various state and federal holidays within each calendar year, and whereas for the general welfare of the county employees, the board desires to observe an additional local holiday in calendar year 2023 to mark the 190th anniversary of the creation of Walker County. And whereas the county has anticipated and planned for the closure of certain business and administrative offices of the government in order to observe said holidays, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, does hereby amend the calendar of the county holidays for the remaining of the calendar year of 2023. So our employees would be off on Friday, December the 22nd, to observe Christmas Eve, Monday, December 25th, to observe Christmas Day, and then Tuesday, December 26th, we're going to call Heritage Day. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners reserves the right to modify or change holiday schedules to substantiate other holidays or schedules, once to award additional holidays or to reduce the number of holidays depending on the need of the county, so resolved and adopted the 14th day of December, 2023. On Monday next week, December the 18th, Walker County will celebrate its 190th day of being in existence. And so we thought as a gift, an appreciation of the celebration, that we would recognize that and commemorate that by calling that Heritage Day and allow our employees to have that day off after Christmas, if the board so desires to approve this resolution. So is any further questions, discussions, or comments of the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this resolution to add this one additional holiday for Heritage Day on Tuesday, December the 26th?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Sir.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the board has approved this additional day for our employees. Okay, we do have a proclamation tonight regarding the 190 years of Walker County, the proclamation by the Walker County Board of Commissioners, 190 years of Walker County, whereas on December the 18th, 1833, Georgia's Governor Wilson Lumpkin signed a bill dividing Murray County into two counties, officially creating Walker County. And whereas this new county was named in honor of Major Freeman Walker, a U.S. Senator from Augusta, who was considered a statesman, distinguished member of the bar, and noted ordinary. And whereas over the next 25 years, portions of Walker County would be used to create counties of Dade, Catusa, Chautauqua, and Whitfield to address the issue of how the size of the county made it difficult for farmers to travel, to attend court sessions, sue to collect debt, and register deeds to record land transactions. And whereas many of the first settlers of Walker County were soldiers of the Revolutionary or Indian War, or other widows or orphans who won lots in the land lottery and came to make their home in the Fertile Valley land. And whereas Walker County has grown from 6,572 residents in 1840, according to the census data, to 68,915 men, women, and children in 2022. And whereas the community marked the 150th anniversary of the county with a parade and a fun day of activities, the unveiling of a courthouse painting, and the commemorative Coke bottle. Therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, on behalf of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim December the 18th, 2023, is Heritage Day in Walker County, Georgia, in honor of the past, present, and future residents. The pioneers of our community paved the way for our present-day citizens to build upon their achievements so that the future generations will be afforded an opportunity to enhance the fabric of what makes Walker County an outstanding place called home, signing seal the 14th day of December, 2023. And part of this celebration on Monday, the 18th, at the Walker County Civic Center at 1:00, we invite the community to come out, and we're going to have a celebration, we have a cake and some other fun things that we're going to do, and we're going to kick off, we're going to do a time capsule. And in that time capsule will be built and placed there after the first year at the Civic Center, and we will ask the citizens of our community to write a letter to yourself of what you want to tell yourself in 10 years. Because on the 200th celebration, we're going to open up that time capsule, and we're going to give those letters back to you so you can remember what you told yourself. So it's going to be something we can have some fun with, you know, there's a lot of different things you could talk about, about maybe one idea of what gas prices are today and what you think gas prices may be in 10 years, or even if gas is still around, if we're all electric. Or maybe electric fizzles out, and we're all still on gas, you know? So there's a lot of fun we could do with this, or there may be, you know, a letter you may want to write to a family member or something funny, or if you've got a young one that's been born that, you know, maybe is a fairly newborn child that will be 10 years old, or nine or 10 years old or something, you may want to write them a letter. But keep in mind, if you send that letter in, and we put it in the time capsule, that's part of a government record, so in 10 years, that's an open record. So don't put anything too personal that you wouldn't want read out loud, because it's going to be public record in 10 years. So it's something we can come together and have some fun, but we do invite the entire community to come out at 1:00 on Monday, this coming Monday, the 18th, at the Walker County Civic Center and have some cake and celebration with us, and we're going to talk a little bit more about the history of Walker County and just have a fun time of celebration. And the Civic Center's decorated for Christmas, so bring the kids, and you can also look out back and see the progress on our all-inclusive playground that's under construction that will hopefully be open soon after the first of the year. So just be a time to come together as a community. Okay, the next item that we have on our agenda is the Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit Task Force Intergovernmental Agreement. This agreement, we do this every year. This is a collaboration, intergovernmental contract with Chautauqua Sheriff's Office, Chautauqua County, City of Tryon, Dade County Sheriff, Dade County, Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit District Attorney, the Walker County Sheriff, and Walker County. And this just memorializes the assignment of personnel. There's two from the Chautauqua County Sheriff's Department, one from the Dade County Sheriff's Department, and then one additional support staff, one police officer from the Town of Tryon, and two sheriff's deputies assigned as well. And so when you turn over into the latter pages, you'll see also at the bottom, the pages are all numbered, but when you get back to page seven, it jumps to page 12, and the pages that are missing are the pages that the other participating agencies signed, that's their page of signature. So once this is all signed, we'll get a copy and we'll record into the minutes everyone's signature, but that's the only thing that you're missing, so if somebody looks at that and says, well, where's page 8, 9, 10, and 11, they're just signature pages. So at this time, we would be approving this document. To my knowledge, there's not any changes to this document, it's just to capture this on an annual basis of renewing that commitment. So at this time, is there any questions of the board of this document? If not, do we have a motion to approve this document?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the document is approved. Okay, we have the approval of the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Subground Award for the project of the Lookout Mountain Mental Health Court Subgrant J 248-073. All of the grants that are received through the mental health court or the drug court all are managed through our accounting department, and so in order to enable our accounting department to manage these grants, funds coming in, that has to be presented before the Board of Commissioners to accept this grant, so this is pretty customary for us to do. These are state funds coming to the court in the amount of $28,200. There doesn't appear to be any match to this, these are just some additional funds from a grant period of January 1, 2024, through June 30, 2024. And so we need to record into the record that the board did approve receiving the management of these funds on behalf of the court system. Any questions, comments from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve accepting these grant funds?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. It is approved. Any opposed? Hearing none. It is approved. Okay, the next item we have here before you is a purchase order, 2024-418, in the total amount of $58,034.76 to Parader Ford for two 2023 Ford Escape all-wheel-drive vehicles being funded from our 2020 splotch. These are identical to the two that we bought last year. I guess this makes the third consecutive year we've been buying two vehicles per year to modernize and update the fleet at the assessor's office. This is some 2023 vehicles that they just got in. They're the identical vehicle and the same price as we paid last year. They've got the 1.5-liter EcoBoost engines. They're all-wheel drive because some of the driveways and terrain that the assessor's office has to go, they really do need and prefer the all-wheel-drive vehicles. But this, I believe there's still three vehicles in their fleet that need to be upgraded. And this would get two of those knocked out and we'd have the final one on our next cycle next year. So the, see the sticker price there and the reduction in cost for the government pricing. Any questions or concerns on the purchase order? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve purchase order 2024-418 in the amount of $58,034.76?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The purchase order is approved. Okay, then we're getting to our action item on our zoning requests. This is for the Cannon Family Request of Variance for Less Than Five Acres in an A1 agriculture zone for property located at 2549 South Dick Creek Road, Lafette, Georgia 30728, tax map impartial number 0-545-008. The Planning Commission heard this at their meeting. Planning Commission's recommendation was to approve with the conditions listed. Okay, the conditions, approve with the condition that the property is divided, that the mobile home has the 3 and 1/4 acres. So they want the mobile home placed on the 3 and 1/4 acres. Any discussion of the Board at this time?
Should we ask John to come up?
Yes, John Persley, if you come up, is our planning director.
So my question, John, as I was reading the minutes for the Planning and Zoning Board, it says motion to deny carry but more vote 34 than yes. Is that a mistake?
No, no. So here's a rendering of just the surrounding areas. I'm sure you're aware of it over there as well. So that's the properties that surround it. That's the acreage that's written on there. So the conditions were to, I think it's 8.28 acres, to keep one plat of land five. And since it's not going to change the demographic of the surrounding areas due to the fact there's acreage that's less than five in ag surrounding it. So that was the condition to keep one piece five so it will be in compliance and then allow the 3.28 for the other.
Okay. So that was the recommendation they made, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I understood. Okay.
That's correct.
All right. And this is based on the hardship for the family?
Yeah, that's correct.
Make sure we make note of that because we're filled with agricultural land under five acres. There is, like John said, there's a lot of, there's a lot of small tracts in Jordanland.
Yeah, and there's 10 that's adjoining with three on there as well, mobile homes. And then, you know, as you can see, there's several pieces of property that's not in compliance already that's been like that for several years.
Okay, thank you.
Sir.
Any additional questions, comments for John? Okay, so this is an action item on our agenda. What's the pleasure of the Board on this?
I'm making a motion to approve it. I was at the planning meeting and there was some question about it. But like Mark said, it is kind of a hardship and looking for something to happen with the place there. And the area around it has already got smaller tracts on it too. So I'm making a motion to approve it based on that.
So you make the motion to approve with the conditions as well of a 3 and 1/2 acre?
Yes, 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 yes.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hart to approve with the conditions recommended by the Planning Commission. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the Board?
I would like to make the statement, like I said, Commissioner Hart just mentioned. And I want us to keep this in mind in the future when we're looking at these hardships as well. This is a very typical picture of how our zoning is in the county. It's about anywhere where we're looking at a track, looking at division or sometimes under the five acres, there's always one or two tracks nearby. So anytime it's a hardship for someone or for their family, we'll always want to try to err to help them any way we can. So I think the right decision was made and we support it as well.
Excellent.
Any further discussion?
Is this property south of Young Drive? Is that correct?
Of Young Drive, yes.
It's south of there, okay. So you don't, okay, I got you.
Yeah, if you see the easement there coming up to 2553, it's just south of that. It's actually right in front of that two-story house there. Well, along the property around the house.
Right, that's what I thought.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none. We have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. It is approved. Okay, the next one we have is the David Pace Request for a rezone from R2 Residential to C1 Commercial for property located at 71 Center Grove Road, Lafette, Georgia, tax map impartial 0-329-2-044. The Planning Commission's recommendation was to approve. Any additional information on that, John?
Well, the building was built in 1972, if I remember correctly. It's been a commercial garage. I think it was a fabrication shop for several years prior to it. Here's the surrounding areas as well. So it's a three or four bay shop, commercial use for years. It does join C1 property currently. So the recommendation was to approve it with conditions. There was some fencing that's going to be required to block in some vehicles that are parked out there because it is going to be used for automotive diesel work. So that's going to be one of the requirements that we'll have to follow up on to make sure going down Lamonack Road there, they're going to have to have a fence separating the property lines and hide the vehicles that are going to be parked out there.
Well, John, that's because of Buck's residential.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I think that was the only issue there. Like I said, that building has been a commercially operated building as long as I can ever remember it.
Yes, sir. It is a commercial building and it's going to be extremely difficult to do anything else besides demo it and start fresh if you were to do something different. It's in good structural shape. Nothing's wrong with the building currently. And I think there's improvements that they intend on doing, just waiting to get the approval before they jump in there and invest in it as well.
Okay. Any questions for John?
No, sir. Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve as submitted. Do we, by Commissioner Askew, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a second. But Commissioner Blakemore, any further discussion of the Board? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. It is approved. Okay, the next we have is Yogis Patel Request a Rezone from R2 Residential to C1 Commercial for property located at 807 Mission Ridge Road, Rossville, Georgia 30741, tax map impartial 0-124-063. Planning Commission's recommendation is to approve. John?
Yes, sir. Their recommendation was to approve. Around that property, the business that has been in business for, I believe, 30-plus years. It does touch and is surrounded by commercial property as well. I think he had a rendering of what his goals were, to build a new building right there, to expand on his current location to make it safer for parking, to be able to come in and out. And due to the area, it was approved. Everything else around there, there's a grocery store, all the property across the road as well is all commercial. So it just fits the demographic of the area.
Okay. Any questions for John?
No, sir.
What's the pleasure of the Board?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the Board?
No, sir.
Hearing none. All in favor of approving as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. It is approved. All right, thank you, John. Okay, the next we have here is our November statistic information. We'll cover all of this. I'll just kind of jump down here kind of to the middle and point out, if you look there under our planning, single-family homes, there was 13 additional permits pulled in November. That's got us to 337 new single-family homes where permits have been pulled this year thus far. That's our best year we've had in quite some time. People investing into our community, so it's always a great sign. We continue to pave some roads. We've still got a few more roads that are going to be paved this year that's on our 2023 paving list. Couple of those roads over in the Villanowell Community where we installed those new water lines on Concord and Ben Child's Road. So they're going to try to get that project in before the end of the year to get the paving done, which would also include Tate Road as well. So Ben Child, Tate Road, and Concord Road. The weather will hold and cooperate with us and get that paved before the end of the year. And then we're working on our 2024 paving list that we'll put out on the procurement side, put that out for bid as well. So we're still working hard on our roads, but we do appreciate everyone supporting the T-Splash, which will give us the funding to continue to pave roads in our community. Our transit still is a very vital part of our community. You can see 2,118 transit trips in November. That's already surpassed all of the previous year. We're at 28,599 trips this year. That's already pushing almost 1,000 more trips than what we had last year. So that just continues to show the value of our transit system in Walker County. All right. Under unfinished business, we have John Stanley's request, a rezone from R1 Residential to R2 Residential for property located at Zero Pine Valley Drive, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map impartial number 0-137-027A. Item was tabled on our March 23, 2023 meeting. It was tabled until Mr. Stanley could come back with more information. Is he present today? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
I'm John Stanley, and I know it's been a long time. So if I need to refresh your memories, I'd be happy to. But this piece of property, we had talked about not only zoning change, but a variance. And after getting feedback from county folks and also people looking at infrastructure, we thought we would withdraw the request with regard to the variance. But that we, and we wouldn't really try to do too much all at once just mainly because of the cost and some things like that. But we do need a place to live and we would really love to have, you know, some animals and things like that with the vision for the future as our kids, my daughter just got married, that, you know, we could have a place where they could, you know, eventually be there also in some other young families and enjoy that in a way that we think would be healthy for a future generation. So we would still like to request a zoning change so that we could have that type of life.
So the zoning change that you're requesting would be what?
It's to an R2 which allows us to have limited agriculture. So we could have a 4-H cow or we could have chickens. My wife likes to, actually I've been a beekeeper, my wife also. I think you could probably do that with how the zoning changed. But as far as the minor agriculture things, where if you had kids that really wanted to be outside doing things, that would allow us to do that type of activity there. Whereas the R1 zoning prohibits that activity.
Can I, can I answer?
Yes, sir.
John, would you come up too, please? We had had a conversation, I had spoken with our building planning and zoning director earlier, but could you kind of, just while y'all are up here too, but just want to kind of talk about it together? Talk about some alternatives as far as when we talk about, because isn't this a, what was the track?
Here's the, it's 39.17.
Yeah, 40-acre track.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And we see what you want to do, I understand completely. I want you to be able to do that. We want you to be able to do that. My concern, and I mentioned earlier and I wanted to bring it forward, is just very simply, and we've done this, we've been very consistent with this board when it comes to rezoning properties. But when you take 39 acres, 40 acres and put it into an R2, that's just saying, that just zoned it to where if you chose to, you could put a subdivision or addition to the subdivision there. Well, as we know, we've got a lot of great growth going on in that area. And it's got to catch up, you know, it's all trying to catch up. So John and I had just talked about, were you able to come up with any other alternatives or ideas? You said you'd look at it and haven't gotten back with it.
So I think low-intensity ag would allow you to do what you're wanting to do there as well. If you left it R1 and you were to do low-intensity ag, it would be allowable uses of that per R ordinance. You would be allowed to do what you're wanting to do and just need a variance and not a rezone. Even ag, if you're wanting to do additional homes on that, since it's 40 acres, almost 40 acres, ag would be a better zoning as well, five acres per dwelling. And so that gives you that option as well instead of R2. In that area, you know, it's growing, it's growing at a rapid pace. And R2 does open the opportunities to do more things, which can be a plus and positive and negative. But for what you're wanting to do, you could build a dwelling. You're a single-family home. And you could also do low-intensity agricultural, which will allow you to do bees, you know, chickens, poultry, dairy cows. You just cannot have, you know, like a hog or a slaughterhouse.
Or a slaughterhouse or a chicken, you know, chicken house or feedlot.
So to me, you know, ag would open up the opportunity to have chicken houses, which would be a negative for the surrounding area. So that's why low-intensity ag is a better option.
So it'd be a variance for, R1 with a variance for a low-intensity agriculture?
Yes, sir. That would give you the allowable use for low-intensity ag on that property.
So that actually, you go ahead.
I'm Melissa Stanley, Dan's wife. Are there restrictions with that variance? Not using the right terminology, sorry. That, do you have to have five acres per home site?
If we had a limited ag variance, we wouldn't have to have a five acre, would we? Like if we decide our kids want to live next to us in three acres with a R1, with a variance, we could do that, couldn't we?
You would have to deed off or separate some plots of land.
Yes.
And then if you'd done that and you could do certain things in that category, which would be an R1 on that single property, it's single-family dwelling.
Yeah.
Doing that variance would allow you to do low-intensity ag. But you're not required to have five acres per dwelling. Now, if you get into multifamily, going in there, then the roadways and everything that you were up against prior to this. Now, if you were to separate some of the property and say you split it in half and had 20 and 20, and then that would allow them some use as well, you know, 10 and 10, just future reference, you could do something like that.
Okay.
But to do R2, there's going to be a lot of requirements as well, just like you were up against.
Yes, sir.
It felt like, and my recommendation for you would be to do low-intensity ag. And that would allow you to have bees, you know,
Yes, sir.
cows, limited number of cows, chickens. You can do garden. You can do, there's a variety of ag opportunities that would be for you.
So is that, can we do that today? Or do we have to go back through the process to get, to try to get a variance? to get, to try to get a variance as opposed to this thing that's on the agenda?
Mr. Gottlieb there to.
Well, let's see. You're here on a rezone, and instead of putting a rezone, we are just going to allow low intensity ag, right? Is that like a conditional, how does that come about?
That'd be conditional use to give them the allowable use that the ordinance.
So this change, it's a conditional use on the zoning. In other words, it's not a technical rezone, but it's given them the ability to do those practices in that zone, if that makes sense, those light agricultural practices versus going to a complete R2 in that area.
So it'd be a conditional use of variance.
Yeah, but now, didn't it originally, that's what I was just curious on, when the original, the original application, wasn't originally for a?
It was originally for a variance.
Variance and a rezone.
That's correct.
So I'm just, I was going to say, since they had originally asked for both, I don't know that we couldn't, that's above my pay.
Okay, so the original, because the only application I'm looking at is just to change from R1 to R2. There was something?
And it was originally to add an extra dwelling unit on the property. Because they wanted seven or eight, and six is all you're allowed on a private drive.
That's what the original was, is that they wanted to build more than six on the private drive on that, on that forty acre track, without any information. We said, we're going to see something else. They changed it and wanted to just do their home. And John's trying to figure out a way to, where we can get the light agricultural, you know, do what, kind of what they want to do without doing a complete, you know, rezone on that size of a track.
That light ag is going to allow you to have more allowable use for ag that you're wanting to do.
Yes, sir.
R2 is going to allow.
Do you have, is there written out in documentation of what that light ag?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we've got that, actually. And I'll be honest with you, Melissa and I, of course, not knowing this idea, hadn't talked about it. But honestly, this actually makes me feel better. Because one thing I was worried about is what happened if we were trying to go through this and it, and it didn't work. We had promised our neighbors there that we're not going to put them in a situation where we're going to sell to somebody R2 and they're going to come in and put a bunch of stuff. Because we don't want that. And I would have to come back here and get it switched back to R1 again.
Well, see, the thing with Stanley is, and learned this a long time ago, it's not what we hope. But if we did that rezone tonight and something were to happen, see, you just don't know. And then that leaves the whole area and everybody, all those neighbors wide open. So we don't want to do that.
I don't, we don't.
And we promised them that we wouldn't do that.
So this will give you what you're needing. Now, the question.
Yes, we do that section in our ordinance, Dan.
Now, or do we need to?
That would be great.
Well, it's sort of unique. I haven't seen a situation like this before. And in one regard, I don't want to put you through any extra hoops. But I am thinking that it might be safer for you if we go through the process, which just, it doesn't sound like it's an urgent situation that we need to address. And I wouldn't want somebody later to come back and object saying, hey, you didn't go through the actual process. Again, I'm not, you know, obviously, you're a citizen. We want to try to make things as reasonable and as efficient as possible. But I think it's in your best interest as well as the county's best interest to go through, back through that process. It doesn't sound like anybody's going to object. You haven't had any objections, have you?
The neighbors had, I think, planning was concerned, but I think that our neighbors and y'all have been very helpful. And so, you know, I think we're confident enough that we'll go through the timeframe. And I don't know that we'll move forward until we get the answer, but I imagine it won't take real long. I know there was some limitations on how many variances you could request over a certain amount of time. I don't know if that would be just from requesting another variance. That may be the only concern I have. But if we can, go ahead and just put that in for, you know, January, February, we would love that.
Well, I think under the circumstances, if that would be okay. Again, please understand, I'm not here to try to slow or complicate a process. But if somebody should later object and say, well, you didn't follow the exact procedure, it's really for your, to your benefit and just for us to set a procedure that we follow.
Thank you, sir. Just appreciate how much you guys seem to care and the input that we've got of these people. We appreciate it.
Well, I think we've got you, I think we've got you to where you need to be.
I talked to several neighbors in the surrounding area and they did not object. The only objection they had, the only thing they were worried about was it being developed out, you know. And so that's his alternative method. I think it's going to be the best fit for that.
Okay, so how do we hear the next step? Like, we could just call it, we could just go back.
Get back to John at the planning office. Get back with John and his staff at the planning office.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
They'll step you through the process.
Well, no, it is a rezone from R1 to R2. They don't want it to be rezoned. I think you need to officially deny.
Deny the rezone, let them come out?
They don't want it. They are thinking that this, that they can either withdraw it or you can just deny it either way.
Withdraw. He's withdrawing. He's going to withdraw it. Yeah, there you go.
And so I do, so every twelve months, you're allowed to do this. So it's going to have to be tabled, or it's going to be out of time for you, for the, until the next.
Say again, huh?
This needs to be tabled and then readdressed.
So that we don't start the process completely over?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, we're talking about the rezone here though, right?
Yeah, but, but we're going to be doing a variance. And I think you only apply, there's a timeframe on how many, so.
So he wants to retract.
Here again, it's kind of a little snafu, but if, but if he retracts it, then we start back. But if we, if he retracts it, then we start back. But if we table it.
It's a situation.
No, no. Before we table it, we can table it. And then they wouldn't do a little.
Yeah, let's just table it out on the basis of caution. And then that will enable them to go back and get variance.
Very good.
Okay. So we have a motion to table the John Stanley request for rezone.
Motion to table.
Have a motion to table by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, that one is being tabled. Okay, the next request for a zone from CN Neighborhood to a C1 commercial for property located at 9180 West Highway 136, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707, tax mapping partial number zero dash two five six dash zero two nine. This item was tabled on October the 26th and November the 9th, 2023. And this was regarding the property at West Highway 136.
This is the one that is subject to this ordinance provision, right?
Right.
So my recommendation, since you have a ordinance, a proposed ordinance provision that we noted on at the next meeting, would be just table this, officially table it one more time until you make a determination regarding the amount.
And then if that passes, we can do it at that same, at the same meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Then I'll make a motion. We table, table that request to the, to the next meeting when we hear the actual ordinance and make our vote on that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Askew to table the request for the rezone. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion of the board?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that is also tabled. Okay, this time on our agenda is our commissioner comments. And we'll start with District One Commissioner Robert Blakemore.
Appreciate everybody coming out here involved, if we can ever help. Call, text, email. Don't forget, Rossville Christmas Parade is going on Saturday evening. The parade will start moving at 6:30 PM.
Oh, I want to, as we're coming up on the holiday season and whether, you know, we all have our, our, ready to celebrate and enjoy it. But I want to encourage everybody to try to support our local folks, you know, as you're shopping and when you're out here, you know, doing your Christmas shopping and things. We do have an abundance of opportunities here in the county. A lot of small businesses, a lot of folks trying to get going, a lot of people trying to stay going. So I would encourage everybody to please during the holiday season, let's, let's try to shop local when we can. And also, don't forget your, your food pantries and your ministries for the, you know, for the needy over the holidays. I'd ask that we please try to keep that in our thoughts and prayers and help them with that. And one last thing, we have an inspector, Brandon Wooton, whose mother has had a severe accident a couple of weeks back. It's been a little more than that now, I guess, John, probably three or four weeks, I guess, now.
Yes, sir.
But his, his thoughts and prayers go out to her. She's having some, some really tough time getting recovered and recovering. And so our thoughts are out to them and appreciate the hard work that all of our departments do, all of our individual departments, department heads and employees. Appreciate all that y'all do as well. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Hart?
So I see that the new signs are up in the county. We're waiting on the electrical for those, I'm assuming? Is that something we do in the house?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's good. See, they look good. Something to add to kind of what Mark said. So I had the opportunity this morning to help with a stocking full of love in Walker County. They've done that for forty-nine years now. There are people there from the road department, from the sheriff department, from the fire department, from the city of LaFayette, city of Rossville, all happen to do that. So great event they did there just to help people, underprivileged people down in the community. So it's a good place to live, a lot of nice, kind people in this county. So thank them all for that. And Merry Christmas. We won't see you after Christmas. So Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Just want to tell all of our employees, appreciate all the hard work that you do to keep our county going. Appreciate the dedication. Just thank all of our employees. And again, want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, since our next meeting will be after Christmas. And I would just say, you know, just think of those less fortunate than, than yourself and try to do things for those folks, less fortunate and our elderly as well. One last thing, the New Harvest Baptist Church will have a Christmas candlelight celebration on the 23rd at 6 o'clock till 7:30. That is my church. And so it's a wonderful event. Would love to have a big crowd. So I want to invite everyone to come and enjoy the celebration. Thank you all.
Very good. I know we do have the holiday season coming up and, you know, we try to get as many of our employees that time off. But I want everybody to remember that our first responders are still working.
Amen.
Our fire department, sheriff's department, also our 911 operators. And many times, we call on other departments to, to come and serve during, during a time of a holiday when something, some event may happen. And that happened on Thanksgiving. And so Carlin Bowers and Bobby Snyder back there in the back and a few of the other guys from the road department had to respond to a rock slide on Dodtry Gap going up the side of the mountain on Thanksgiving morning. So they were out while we were all at home and warm and cozy and having Thanksgiving lunch. They were out moving boulders out of the road. So thank you to Carlin and Bobby for going out and doing that and the other men on the team. So just keep in mind, when you see our first responders out in public, just remember that they're, they're, they're making a sacrifice for our protection of our community. And they're working these 24-hour shifts in the fire department or 12-hour shifts as a police officer or 911 operator. They're doing that to protect our community so we can all rest and have a safe community and a safe environment. So we want to give my public thanks to our first responders before we go tonight. We do have an item for an executive session regarding personnel. Do we have any other topics for executive session? David, do you have anything?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Personnel.
Just anything other than personnel? Okay. So we will need a motion from the board to temporarily adjourn for an executive session for personnel?
Motion to go into an executive session for personnel.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Hearing none, we will reconvene right after our executive session. Thank you. Okay, it is 8:58 PM on Thursday, December the 14th. We just finished our executive session. There's no further business from our executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We do stand adjourned. Wish everyone a Merry Christmas. And we'll be back here on Thursday, December the 28th. Y'all have a good night. Thank you.